We call an order for the City of Nellie and Community's Redevelopment Agency meeting on July the 12th. We all stand. For what? What the ladies do to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all. Why don't we take a moment of silence? Okay. All right. Let's see. Mayor Dunn?
Here.
Vice Mayor Anzki?
Here.
Councilperson Kirsten Mendelsohn?
Here.
Councilwoman Lehman?
Here.
Councilwoman Covich?
Present.
Julie Danowski, Rutgers Court?
Here.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer?
City Attorney Andrew Hand?
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Wednesday, July 5th, 2023. Okay. First item on the agenda is an application for CRA Historic Preservation Facade Rehabilitation Reimbursement Grant, HPBG 2023-11, Raymond Christ at 20622 Chestnut Street. Have any public comments?
I have some, the application package here.
Okay.
It couldn't have been published with the agenda because it wasn't ADA compliant.
Sure.
But I have, I don't know that y'all want to see that, but it looks like we have some photos here where these exterior windows here are being replaced. That's what the grant application is for.
Okay.
In the maximum amount of $5,000. And of course, the work has to be done.
Right.
The applicant has to pay for it and then they get reimbursed after the fact.
Right. Right, okay. All right. I'm trying to remember where that is on Chestnut Street. I don't recognize it. That's okay. All right. Does anybody have any comments on the council here? I mean, great to me. This is what it should be used for.
Right. Let's have a question. Is it a home or a business? It looks like a home, but I wouldn't sure.
I'm sure it's a home. I can pull the application package back up and see if it, if there's any detail there. Um, it's Danelle and Aaron Heat, Rick Christ. That may be his office. It may be like a residential business office there on Chestnut. I think if you're coming from the Circle K down Chestnut, I think it's right there on the left.
Yeah, real close to 40. Or 41, I mean.
And it's to replace the front and side windows.
Cool.
But I do think that's his office location.
Okay.
Thanks, Mandy.
Mm-hmm.
All right. I mean, I don't see anything wrong with that. Jan, you or Rex got any questions, comments? Y'all good with this? All good? Okay. Um, I guess we need a proposed motion that we allow this grant $5,000. Anybody make that?
I move CRA grant funds be awarded in the maximum eligible amount of $5,000 for application HPG 2023-11 to Raymond Christ.
Okay. Seconds. Second. All right. Need any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Again, that's the only thing we have on the agenda tonight, but I think these are the kind of things I look for CRA funds going to, to help improve people's properties, especially in the historic district where, again, they go ahead and spend the money and then apply for a grant, and I think this is a good use of this funds. So, any public comments? Go ahead, sir.
I stopped in at Danny Johnson Center, Dusen, and left information for the owner. Her name is Sylvia Waugh, and just mentioned, hey, if you were in the, in a position where we, where you would like to have the front of this building painted, the city will reimburse and we could round up a lot of volunteers to help. And the clerks that were there said absolutely we'd get volunteers.
Right.
Does anybody here know her or have ever had a conversation with her? Sylvia Waugh, W-A-U-G-H?
I want to say my wife probably has. I know when, years ago, I took over the house for my mom, we took an awful lot of stuff down there.
Yeah, I have to.
And the people were super nice.
Oh, yeah. They saved visits, too.
Oh, they do.
They got a lot of checks for, you know, local organizations here.
Right. They contribute a lot back into the community for different, different projects and stuff. So, yeah, it'd be great if she would, if she got the funds to do it.
If we can write her a formal letter, so I left my car and information on a piece of paper.
I would say, I have not approached that business myself, but I did speak with someone who approached them about the grant, as we have approached many people in the historic district. I don't know if that woman is the manager of the store or the owner of the property, but.
She's just the owner of the property.
Oh, she's the actual owner of the property?
Yes, she owns the property, yes.
Okay, so she could put in the application like anyone down there and, and we could consider that like any application, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great.
Absolutely. I know that was the problem I kept hearing, that a couple of folks went down there and started asking people, would they consider applying for any grants? And most of the people that are running those businesses don't own those buildings.
That's right.
And they said, you know, I'd love to do it, but I don't own the building and I can't commit that. And so, that's something, but if this lady owned the building, that would be.
It is an attractive building. I mean, it's not in disrepair, but, but hey, is this mustard up there?
Yeah.
Shouldn't say that in public?
I mean, they don't want to be on the spot or anything, but.
Could be improved.
Do you have basic information? This grant is getting ready to be, or maybe, Jen, is getting ready to be closed, right? And then it will open back up? And then there's also a process of revising the application a little bit and reconsidering where, what sections of the city will be applied to the grant, right?
Right, so the application cycle ended June 30th. So, we'll take applications after June 30th.
Okay.
And then it starts back up October 1st.
Thank you for that info.
And the, the grant application itself, I think in this budget cycle, the, everything that was included in this budget cycle was specifically for the historic district.
Uh-huh.
It was divvied up $5,000 per application. And then it depends on going forward in the next budget cycle, if you want to still keep that money strictly in the historic district, if you're going to reallocate funds for these grants, or if you want to open it up to the entire CRA district. Because we have two separate grant applications. One is anybody in the CRA outside of the historic district would not go before the historic board. They would come directly to the CRA board. But those that are in the historic district first have to go to the historic board.
Right.
Now, confusion.
Are they both for $5,000?
It's whatever you want to make them.
Oh, okay.
I mean, the, the policy right now is the maximum of $5,000, but council has, and the CRA, well, the CRA board has the ability to change that.
Oh, okay.
So, do you think it's something that you can queue up for a future workshop so that we can talk about the amounts and the area and then also bring any updates to the application that may have been considered by the historic boards?
Sure.
That would be great.
I think, I think that'd be good.
Been kind of getting to know about it.
You know, I know this last time it was just for the historic board, I mean, district, but I think it ought to be opened up now for the whole CRA.
And what I just heard, Mandy, you say it's a little bit different, because that was my understanding as well. But what I'm hearing you say is that really it could be used within the historic district or outside of the historic district, that anyone can apply.
As long as it's in the CRA district.
Right.
As long as it's in the CRA district. Okay.
Good deal. Well, that's, I think, in the future, that would be something good to discuss.
Do you want us to put that on the office workshop to talk about?
Sure.
I'll make.
We're going to be talking about the CRA budget July 24th at a max budget workshop. So, you could even start the conversation, you know, at that point in time.
Right.
Especially since we're preparing the budget, you may want to change the dollar amount of the grant. You may want to increase it through next year. It's a consideration, you know, to maybe get more.
I, I think it just is great when people do apply, but some of them, I know the reaction I kept hearing from folks who were asking people, did they want to apply like Jan just said? The biggest thing was, one, well, I don't own the building, or two, I don't have the money to spend first to then come back and ask for it later and not be sure I get it. And I, I get that, but I don't have a problem with that side of it. The problem is getting some of these buildings to want to do it. But, yeah, I mean, I think August would be a good time to put it. Let's just see if we can get it in there without overloading August.
Yeah, because if it's not opening up again until.
We can modify it.
Yeah, and then I think that the historic board was looking at potential modifications, like there was a question at one point, like, should we continue to include landscape? Because sometimes landscapes are put in without, just an example, without the proper irrigation and then they die and it's kind of a lost cause. So, I think that if we can get the historic district's input on what they, or the historic board, and again, I know they're only part of it, but any of their suggestions on how they would like to see it updated, then, you know, it would be great to have their input before it came to us. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And I know we're not in a rush.
Andy, would that have to be discussed with the board acting as the CRA board? Or could council discuss it and then pass those changes as CRA board?
I'm sorry, I missed the changes to, I was just looking at this document here, the changes to.
If you're, if they were going to modify the historic, or the CRA grant application and guidelines, could the city council, you know, vet all that and then come back as the CRA board to adopt those changes? Or would they need to meet as the CRA board to vet those changes?
You should probably look and see how it was done before typically we're going to enact it, you know? We don't have the CRA advisory board now. So, we would want to go ahead and get a recommendation, you know, from the actual CRA board to council. And I don't recall whether, and what depends here is, I don't recall whether that was enacted by the CRA board or the council. Both have the authority to do so. So, we would just want to follow the same procedure we did before, understanding that we don't have the advisory board anymore. So, it was enacted by council. We'd still want to take it before the CRA board, just as a formality, so they can review it, you know, really the council, and then send it to council. And we could just do it as a special meeting, you know, right before.
Okay, so I can take this as a direction from the CRA board to forward to council, recommending the council to review the grant application and process?
Yes.
Okay.
Any input from the historic board? Because I do know that they've been talking about it.
Okay, and I don't think that they meet again before your August meeting.
That's true.
So, you may have to push it out in September if we want to get that on the historic board agenda. So, let me make a note to September and get this on the historic board's August agenda.
That would be great.
Um, let's see.
As I recall, the historic board made some revisions. And one of the things they added was landscaping, but it had to be, how shall I say, a formal permanent kind, like shrubs, not just flowers. And they also discussed that their planters, that if there was some kind of construction involved with the landscaping plan. So, they thought that would add some kind of terminance to the, as a.
I don't, I mean, off the top of my head, I don't recall the details.
Yeah.
Of all that, but I know that there have been some questions as to, you know, yard ornaments, are those included and things like that, that need to be really more clearly defined as landscaping, is a, is a yard ornament considered landscaping? A birdhouse?
And I think there was revision on business versus residence and that came up tonight. So, just some fine tuning.
And I don't know, Jen, for budgeting purposes, if you really need to know, like, how this is all going to pan out before you finalize that number at the budget?
No, I, I don't need that. There is a dollar amount that's been suggested for the budget.
Okay. And then it'll be allocated accordingly based on how they revised the plan?
Exactly. Like, I think it's, I want to say, I think it's $85,000. Let's say $80,000, you want to give out $40,000 on the grants. If that's, and I think one of the grant policies allows a large dollar amount for the grant.
Yeah.
I don't recall which one, there are a couple of different policies.
All right.
But we can allocate it, you know, whichever way you want to decide to.
That'd be fine. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. You done? Motion to adjourn.
Public comment?
Oh, I did.
We already got that public.
I did do the public comment.
Mike, you got anything to say?
I looked at him, he looked around. No, I already did the public comment.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So do I.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We call an order for the City of Nellie and Community.
Reporting in progress.
Meeting of July the 12th, 5:30. Could we all please stand for the pleasure? Please, ladies and gentlemen, to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all. Does anybody like to make a prayer? If not, we'll have a moment of silence. Okay. Do you want to call roll?
Mayor Dunn?
Here.
Vice Mayor Anzki?
Here.
Councilperson Kirsten Mendelsohn?
Here.
Councilwoman Lehman?
Here.
Councilwoman Covich?
Present.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer?
Here.
Chad Ward, Public Works Manager?
Here.
Julie Danowski?
Rutgers Court?
Here.
Chief Scott Leon?
Here.
Lieutenant Bray?
Here.
We also have Mike Rankin here from LPG Planning Service. The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Wednesday, July 5th, 2023. The agenda was amended on July 10th, 2023 to add backup to item number six. And again, on July 12th, 2023, to add new item number four.
Okay.
I'm sorry. City Attorney Andrew Hand?
I'm here.
I was going to say, I thought he missed, she missed somebody. Didn't think it was. All right.
Sorry, Andrew.
Anybody on the council have any comments regarding this agenda? We all good with it? Questions? Okay. Um, now we will keep everybody in the loop on this. We do allow public comments for three minutes. You can speak now. You will also have an opportunity to speak on the various agenda items as each item comes up on the agenda. So, I would ask you to speak at this time, if you would like to, on non-agenda items. Is anybody signed up?
No, sir.
Okay. Is anybody in the audience like to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay. Is anybody on Zoom meeting?
No, sir.
Okay, well, good. Okay. And again, as we proceed through the normal meeting agenda, you will be allowed, the public will be allowed to make comments concerning those agenda items as they're, as they're being discussed. First item is the items on the consent agenda. There's one, two, three, four items on the consent agenda. Does anybody in the public have a comment on any of these items?
Mayor, we would need to remove agenda item number three.
Three.
Attorney Hand has advised us to remove that because the backup that was published with that is not the most recent version of that contract, and he would like to point out his changes that he made to it.
Okay, well, that's fine. We'll take number three off. Got it. So, then we're just talking about items one, two, and four, and five.
I just know we have something on the vertex. Is that the?
Vertex is the police IT.
Isn't that the one that we need to make sure we get past?
I think we may still be doing that through a motion.
It's still passing on the regular agenda.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's being moved.
Yeah, it's just being moved to the regular.
Must be looking over the agenda this whole, hold on. You were correct. There are five items. All right, I'm sorry. So, we're going to cover on the consent agenda the items one, two, four, and five. Okay? On the consent agenda has, is anybody in the public like to make comment on any of these consent agenda items? Anybody on council like to have a comment on any of these consent agenda items? And again, we're not discussing item number three. It will be put on the regular agenda? Can I get a motion to accept and approve the consent agenda items as presented?
I'm over the second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Who was the second on that?
Rex.
Rex?
I thought you did the motion.
Who was the second? Rex made the motion.
Okay. I can't make the motion. I'll second.
Okay. I make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
I second.
All right. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Accept, accept it as presented. Okay.
Now, if you want to go ahead and make the number?
Yeah, let's, since three is no longer on the consent, let's just put it next. Has to do with an authorization of mayor's sign an agreement, AGR 2023-17 with Vertex Consulting. And Andrew, you have some comments on that?
Yes, sir. And talking with staff, it just appears that what is appearing on the agenda on the city website is not the version that is in the city's backup folder. And so, the version on the agenda website doesn't have a few changes in there, and these are changes that are essentially required to comply with Florida law. Just these changes here, we see some changes to confidentiality that provide for the fact that this is a city and subject to Florida public records and that regardless of what the provisions say in confidentiality, the city is obligated to comply with Florida law. We also have a limitation indemnification that follows to make it clear that we're not waiving any of the statutory standards, even if the city were to be, for some reason, sued in court, where the limits don't apply if they're not put into the contract. So, that places that into the contract and then we have the mandatory public language. That's it. Nothing that I, at least I believe that any vendor would find objectionable and I, at least it's my understanding that the vendor didn't agree to these.
Okay. The vendor did agree to them, you think?
Um.
Or you hadn't heard that it didn't?
Jen, it was forwarded to them?
I believe so. I want to double check and just make sure that they, I would be they have any problem with it. And if they do, then we'll address it at that time.
Yeah, it was, it was my understanding that it, that it was, but if there is still some uncertainty, what council could do tonight, regardless, is still approve this version or we can have that meeting on Monday.
Fine.
Staff will get in touch with Vertex tomorrow. And if there is some sort of a hiccup, you know, we can address that between now and Monday. It's a lot on the agenda there, get it taken care of, because I know this is important.
Yes, yes, it is. Okay. Um, does anybody up here have any comments for issues with any of this? All in good hands? Okay. Um, is there any public comment on this Vertex agreement from the public? Okay? Is there anybody out there in Zoom, Zoom land, commenting or anything? Okay, we're good. Okay. Okay, can I get a motion that, to approve this, so I can sign it, assuming Vertex agrees with it?
I motion that we authorize the mayor to sign agreement, ARG 2023-17 with Vertex Consulting.
Okay, I'll get a second.
Second.
Okay. All, any discussion up here? Well, good. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Pass its numbers. And I agree, Andrew, if they have any pushback, we can put it on Monday's agenda, which we'll have a meeting and we can, a vote on it at the end and approve it. Okay. Hopefully, this takes care of that item. All right. Now, I'm not sure I'm reading to the right place here. Okay, item number six is a resolution, RES 2023-11 on the surplus vehicles. There's a list of those that were provided, that we have as a city. We're just trying to clean up some issues with some excess vehicles and vehicles no longer working and we want to get rid of them, so we have to pay insurance and taxes and all that gets back. So, now there is one, and the chief may want to address this, where actually one of these items is a truck that I believe will be traded in on a new truck, so it will not actually be surplus sold, it's going to be traded in. And you want to comment on that, chief?
Before the chief does.
Okay.
We wrote the ordinance so that it has, so the ordinance includes can be traded in to any licensed dealer.
Right.
That should cover that.
Because Chad is going to take probably the dump truck and the bucket truck and trade those as well.
Right.
So, the way it's written is the property outline and the exhibit is clear of surplus. Some of it will go to the exhution or trade with Duval Ford or other approved license dealers.
Well, it takes care of the chief's truck issue right there.
It takes care of the chief's and the two trucks that Chad will trade.
Right, got you.
Okay.
So, just on the truck issue, the purchase of a past police vehicle was made in 2022, but the vehicle didn't come in until 2023, so it was paid for by the 2023 budget instead of 2022 budget. So, the money that was spent for that vehicle was $30 some thousand dollars. There's, I believe, $17,000.
There's $11,000 remaining.
Of the 50, right.
If the vehicle, if, if you authorize the chief to go ahead and order the vehicle and hit pass this information to you all earlier, there's savings of $4,000 if he's authorized to move forward with ordering the vehicle now. And if it comes in by September 30th, I would present a budget amendment to bring in money from the sales tax reserve. That would also free up the money in his budget for next year for a vehicle, like a trade off. If it doesn't come in until after September, then the money's budgeted.
Right.
It's the vehicle he's got. So, and that's what happened. It came in, the vehicle that he ordered in '22, it came in in '23. If I remember correctly, we paid for it up till '23. So, we just missed that deadline.
Okay. All right. Okay.
So, the, the price of the truck with the trade in is $29,000. There's $11,000 left over right now, so we have to bring in.
Oh, I'm sorry, $17,000.
$17,000.
So, we have, we have, there's $17,000, $17,000 left, so we have to bring in $11,000 from next year.
Right.
Okay, right. And as far as the truck for, I'm sorry, hold on.
Go ahead.
As far as the truck for the 23, 24, or vehicle for the 23, 24 budget, we can discuss that when we do the 23, 24 budget?
Yes, but we still would need to leave it in there because he's just ordering this. We don't know. We don't know.
Oh, no, I understand that, got you.
But that money wouldn't be spent.
Right.
If we pay for it by September 30th, that money is in the budget, but it's really not going anywhere.
Got you.
Okay. Following. I got it. Y'all have any questions about it? You following the money?
I'll follow.
No, no, I'm... I think honestly, reading the schedule and especially looking at the documents the chief provided concerning how we're trading it in, I kind of followed it, so I'm okay with it.
And with the vehicles right now, they're like, you don't know when the vehicle will be ordered now. We can't tell you when it's going to come.
Right.
You know, thirty days could come, six months could be a year.
Right.
But if we get it on a 2023 vehicle, it's four thousand dollars cheaper than if we wait to order a 2024 vehicle.
Got it. Okay.
I have a question on these vehicles going to Weeks Auction. Would they be selling in August or September?
We haven't gotten that far, Jan, yet. Right. We're going to pass that. And between the dump truck, I believe the chief's pretty sound on what he's doing in Public Works. We still got to work out some scheduling logistics based on when the dealers get back with Public Works for the estimates and everything we've been asking for.
We have two vehicles that we got Weeks.
Okay, right. I saw that, yeah. Good deal. All right. Anybody got any questions on this? Just following the vehicles around? I guess, do we have any comments up here with this? Are we all good with this? Anybody in the public have any comments they'd like to make about this disposal of these vehicles? Again, it looks like we may be trading in the pickup and a couple more in Public Works, and then the rest of them would be sold through Weeks Liquidation over an account.
Actually, Willie, I do have a question.
Sure.
Would this dealer not... Is not rolling, or the vehicle is not in shape for this dealer to take your two vehicles?
Didn't even approach that. I just went for the truck now.
Because we don't get much from Weeks.
Right. And I'll reach back after them and ask them, you know, we give you three vehicles, what will you give me? But then I have to come back and ask for something for you guys, right? Or is that one?
You just go ahead.
Okay.
In my opinion. And then if you get something, or it does, I agree with you. If we just... If he'll trade, say if there was a Ford...
Expedition or something?
Or Expedition, yeah. If that one, it seemed like it's an '09, you might get a lot more than you get at Weeks for it.
Right. We're getting like five hundred bucks out of Weeks, and they're indicted.
I would just ask and send it out to you guys.
That will not stop this from happening. You know, we still can authorize that and move ahead, but if you could get those two vehicles to bring the cost of this truck down, that'd be great. And then we would definitely get more from them if they're... We'll entertain it than we will in Weeks.
Yeah. The Crown Vic, I don't think you're getting no five hundred bucks for that.
That's the whole world.
Whatever. All right. Whatever. Okay. Any public comments on this? I think I've already asked that once. If not, I have a motion to go forward with the surplus sale of these vehicles or trade-in of these vehicles.
I would read... I move Resolution RES 2023-11 to be read by title only.
Can I have a second?
Little second.
Okay. And well?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Do you need to have... We need a separate motion approving the purchase of the new vehicle.
Okay.
Police Department, a 2023 Ford F-150 crew cab.
Can we get through the resolution, and then we can talk about that?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we had a proposed motion and a second to...
Read by title only.
Read by title only.
Vote.
Okay.
Vote.
Do we buy title only?
Yeah. We're ready to vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Resolution Number RES 2023-11, a resolution of the City of Danellin, Florida, declaring certain property a surplus and providing for disposal thereof.
Okay. Now...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? We still good? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, Jan, your question. I think we do have to talk about buying a truck as a separate item.
Yes.
Okay. Good move. With that, I know the chief discussed it. It's 2023 F-150 Ford XL. There it is. Okay. So we need a motion to purchase that.
I make a motion that we approve the police department in purchasing a 2023 Ford F-150 crew cab truck.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Who are we purchasing this truck?
This is... This is for the police department.
Say that again.
It's for the police department.
This is the motion that actually...
Who are we purchasing it from?
Oh, I'm sorry. Right now, it looks like Duval... What is this? Duval Ford, yeah.
Where are they located?
Jacksonville.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm just adding, Jan, they're one of the government. It's on the government list, so we get a lot better break.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. All right, we got a motion to do that in a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion up here? I think we've already discussed that there'll be a trade-in on that as well, and so it's just puts in motion the purchase of the truck. And again, if you end up trading in more another vehicle with it, we'll just take care of that when it comes up. Okay? All right. Any public comment on that? If not, we need a vote up here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. All right. All right. Resolution RES 2023-12, surplus modular office trailer. Do we have any public comment on that? Not appear to be. And I get a motion to this resolution to be read by title only.
I move Resolution RES 2023-12 to be read by title only.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion up here? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay.
Resolution Number RES 2023-12, a resolution of the City of Danellin, Florida, declaring certain property a surplus and providing for disposal thereof.
Okay. Good deal. All right.
I move that Resolution 2023-12 be approved.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
All right, any discussion up here? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good deal. That should take care of all those wonderful little things. Now, we go to a quasi-hearing judicial hearing statement. Please tell me you can read this, because I can't.
Well, I got to drink the water. All witnesses addressing the city council in this quasi-judicial hearing will be asked to limit their comments to the specific subject being addressed. Witnesses should disclose any personal interest or relationship in any business, professional, or financial interest with any individual, group, project, or proposal regarding the subject matter under review. Witnesses should always err on the side of more public disclosure, not less, in order to provide integrity to the public process. Testimony will be limited to three minutes per witness unless the applicant, staff, or affected person requests an extension of time. A request for extension of time will be considered by the council to assure all parties have a full and fair opportunity to participate without undue repetition and delay. Public input is valued by the council. However, in order to foster mutual respect, personal comments should not be directed toward council members or staff. Members of the public shall refrain from interrupting the speaker at the podium. At the conclusion of these hearings, the city council of the City of Danellin will make a decision whether to approve the applicant's request. All witnesses will be sworn in and will testify under oath. All persons presenting evidence will state their name and residence address for the record. All documentary evidence will be marked as an exhibit and maintained as part of the record if accepted by council. After each witness testifies, any councilman made question, the witness. The owner is entitled to cross-examine each witness after his or her testimony and shall do so by asking questions of the witness or rebut the witness's testimony by presenting contrary testimony or documentary after a witness testifies.
Okay. We're at Agenda Item Number Eight. Quasi-judicial hearing site plan review, SPL 2023-0085, site plan application, PZ20230085, PS Coffee, LLC, Pittman Engineering, EP... Or excuse me, PE, notification to the applicant and adjacent property owners on June 26, 2023. It is now 5:55 PM. I closed the regular meeting and opened the judicial... Quasi-judicial hearing to discuss sites, site plan review, SPL 2023-0085, site plan application, PZ20230085, PS Coffee, LLC, Pittman Engineering, PE, notification to applicants and adjacent property owners on June 26, 2023. Andrew?
I would just ask that anyone who will be providing testimony on this item, please stand and raise the right hand. Do you promise to tell the truth in the testimony you're about to give?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Ben's sworn in.
All right. Discussion of contacts, ex parte communication, and other evidence gathered by the decision-making body, the mayor. I guess that's me. Just open this up for discussion by them?
All it is, Mayor, that the ex parte is just asking each of the council members, and I can ask everybody collectively, has anyone had any ex parte communications on this matter that they need to disclose at this time?
No.
No disclosures, then certainly can move into presentation, sir.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody on the staff who wants to... You're not doing a presentation, but Mike, you are, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Why don't you get up and do your presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission, staff, and audience. For the record, Michael Rankin, the managing partner for LPG Land Planning Group, currently serving for your land planning needs. Two projects for you tonight. The first one is, as Mayor mentioned, for PS Coffee LLC. This is really a drop-in. They're dropping a building into an existing car park or parking lot. The first response on the site plan was 6th of March, which the applicant then responded addressing parking, buffer, landscaping, and the dumpster for the 24... Twenty-by-forty building, and that was satisfied on the 13th of April. We had planning and zoning on June 20th. Lots of questions. I believe it was... They were successfully answered by Planning and Zoning Commission and unanimous approval for this. But they are basically taking... Can you go to the Blue Line site? There... If you can see the highlighted area to the top, you can see where the building would lay, the improvements to the existing parking lot there. You can see how the traffic would facilitate into lineup to buy your coffee and roll out of the area. There are no interior seats, and you can also see to the left upper corner there, you can see a dumpster that is properly enclosed. So with several conversation and communication, the applicant did receive a favorable recommendation by LPG to move forward with site plan approval, and the applicant is here tonight by way of their engineer if you have any questions.
All right. He's a property owner?
No, I'm with the engineering firm.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Robert Davis, Columbia County Pittman Engineering.
Okay.
He pretty much covered everything, so I mean, if y'all have questions...
Explain it. How big was this building?
It's a 20-by-40. Basically, it's a drive-through on each side of the building. If you go to any larger counties, there's six of them, you know, or seven of them. I mean, they're everywhere. There's no inside seating, so it's just drive-through, drive-through, grab your coffee, and exit, like he said.
Eric and I approach.
Sure.
Right on the map here. Excuse me. You can... Here's the building right here.
Right.
That's the actual building. There's the dumpster, and then your feet.
Got you. Very simple. How do you get water, that thing?
I was going to ask kind of utilities, right?
You get water.
The utilities will be coming. There's a water line to Hardee's already that we'll be connecting to. So they'll either directional drill, or they'll tear up the asphalt there. That'd be up to the contractor.
Oh, is that it?
And sewers, same thing. There's a line running to Hardee's there that we're connecting to.
Okay, got it. Got it. No, it's... Sounds like we're going to do something. I just didn't understand how you get all the power and water.
Yes, sir. They... Like he said, it is an existing parking lot, but it'd be recreated with all the storm art collected through three islands. So honestly, the parking lot probably drained better after construction than it currently does, because it's an older site.
Sure.
I have a question. How many parking spaces are actually associated with the building business?
With the building itself, we only need about three to four.
Or employees?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. But we made sure to replace all the existing parking spots that were there. We actually proposed four more than what's existing there for overflow purposes. And there'll be more landscaping than currently. There's only like two islands out there now. You see, there's six islands, I believe, of landscaping, so it'd be better vegetated.
Is electric underground or overhead?
That's the underground, too.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is about... I went to Taco Bell yesterday during the rainstorm, and I got wet, even though they have overhangs. What kind of overhang is going to exist to keep the customers who are picking up their coffee?
We're not doing the building parts, so I mean, I don't know what will be there for overhang. Most of them don't have an overhang because it's such a quick process of just in and out.
Really?
There's... They do serve some food, but it's like small sandwiches. But most of them I've seen, they don't usually put an overhang because it's such a quick process in and out.
And the truck will generally take it all by...
Right.
Right. Really, Jan, a little stormy day to get done.
I'm telling you, they have an overhang at Taco Bell, and inside my car got wet.
Wow. Okay. All right. All right. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Is there any public comment on this particular item? Any from the public that'd like to speak? I guess not. You see anything out in Zoom land?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I do have one more question. Who are the owners? Who are the owners? Are they in-state partners or what's their background?
Well, they're obviously in the coffee, but tough to determine who they are because this is just a site plan application. So when they submit their building plans, that'll flesh out who it is.
Rainbow coming then. Thank you.
Good deal.
I just have a quick question. If you, what, what is your timeframe, do you think it'll be completed by?
Well, as a coffee drinker myself, I'd like to see it tomorrow. I'm guessing six to nine months.
Yeah, it's a pretty quick operation because, again, the building's only 20 by 40, so.
You know, this is one of these deals where the rising tide raises all ships. You can see with the improvements that they're doing, they've done a great job on the site plan. It's going to probably raise the opportunity to see the bar lifted on some of the other buildings in the area there.
Sure. I'm with you, I'm, I'm ready for some outside coffee myself.
Even if we get wet.
All right. All right. I think, any other public discussion on this? All good? Okay. It is now 6:07 and I, PM, I closed the quasi judicial hearing and now reopen the July 12, 2023 City Council meeting. Anybody on the council have any comments concerning this? Y'all good? I'm good, I, I'm looking forward to it, man. I saw this on the agenda, I thought, man, can we be here tomorrow?
And they did a great job on the site plan.
No, I, I just didn't realize that's what this was, that y'all were just, I thought this was somebody building a building here and, you know, putting it, or putting it in a shopping center or something like that. This is just a free standing in the parking lot.
Yes, sir.
Amazing. That's good stuff. Y'all have any other comments on this? Y'all good? Okay. Okay.
And that person opposed motion?
No, we're not.
I move to find the site plan consistent with the city's comprehensive plan.
Second.
Okay. We got to propose and assess any public comments on the site plan consistent with comprehensive plans from the public. Appears to be. Okay. Not a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Got anyone opposed? No. Unanimous. All right, can I get a proposal? Move forward.
I move the site plan SPL 2023-0085 for P S Coffee LLC to be approved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I was here. Any public discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Passive unanimous. All right. Good luck. Like I said, get started. I'm ready for some good coffee. For six months, need a winner. That'll work. All right. Now, we have another judicial hearing on the site plan review SPL 2023-0166. Site plan application EZ 2023-0166. Heart of Florida Health Center Inc. Notification of applicants and adjacent property owners on June 26 of 2023. Script here. The quasi hearing on site plan SPL 2023-0166. Site plan application EZ 2023-0166. Heart of Florida Health Center Inc. Marion Torres Martinez. Notification of applicants and adjacent property owners on 2026 of 23. It is now 6:10 and I close the regular meeting and open the quasi judicial hearing to discuss site plan review SPL 2023-0166. Site plan application EZ 2023-0166. Heart of Health, Heart of Florida Health Center Inc. Maria Torres Martinez. Notification to the applicants and adjacent property owners on June 26 of 2023.
Yes, sir. Will anyone providing testimony on this item, please stand and raise the right hand? Under penalty of perjury, you promised to tell the truth in the testimony you're about to give?
Yes.
Thank you. Do any members of council have any ex parte matters or any ex parte communications, pardon me, they need to disclose on this matter?
I do not.
No.
No. Thank you. Mayor, that portion been completed and witnesses are sworn in.
All right. Michael Rankin.
Again, good evening, Mayor, members of the Commission, staff and guests in the audience. For the record, Michael Rankin, LPG managing partner. Got another unique project. I think you're going to be real excited with the results of this project. I was just out there earlier today. Nice building, doing some good business in town, but I think once they add on to the building and do the proper landscaping, I think you'll be real pleased with their efforts. This is Heart of Florida Health Center. It's on 4.46 acres. Existing zoning is D4. This came to staff on 22 February as an existing building of 1,152 square feet. They're going to add 2,362 square feet. Is that correct? The majority of, and then we re-reviewed on 26 April. The majority of the issues that we had, surveying the planners, had to address with the parking, buffers and some landscaping. And you can see, there's the existing property. Andy, can you go to, I think you, one or two more slides, please? Yeah, I thought we had the blue line in there. Is that the last page? Should be right before the resolution in the packet. Yeah, keep, you're getting there. One more. I think there's a better one in there. Looks like redacted planning documents. There. I think you hit it there. Go one more. There you go. Can we, can you work off that one? Is that, that satisfied at the current site?
Yes.
Okay. Because we had a couple on there, we did make some changes. You'll see the existing building marked there, there you go, thank you, Andy, and then you'll see the proposed building and the re-engineering of the retention and then the car park. And be mindful with this being a clinic, they're going to have people that are going to come in and come out by appointment, and you're not going to have a situation where you've got cars stacking up trying to get in to see the doctor. They'll be scheduled accordingly, so. The site plan has made some major improvements to the hydrology of the property as well as, again, curting up the property. We did make sure that adequate landscaping was in there, and then they're using the current sign, the monument sign as, yeah, they're not adding a sign to it. So basically, they're adding 2,362 square feet to the existing 1,152 square feet. And I believe we learned at planning and zoning, this was, by the way, by planning and zoning meeting, was unanimous, I think they're picking up a doctor or two possibly. Yeah. So. So it'll be a, for lack of better words, an in and out clinic where you make your appointment, go see the doc, get out of there, next people load in. So we, after the last review that we did on 26 April, they have satisfied all the planning and zoning codes for the City of Dunellen, and we recommend approval. And the applicant is here, the engineer is here to represent them if you have any questions.
Okay. Would you like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, councilman and woman, Powell Mastrosario, Mastrosario Engineering, 170 Southeast, 32nd Place, Ocala, Florida. Here to answer any questions. Worked on this for the Heart of Florida. I believe that we've done a benefit not only to the site and the community, we had two driveways in and out. Now we've just made one point of connection. And, you know, off topic, if, if, if the, if law enforcement has a car for example, $500, I gladly take it. For a thousand, my son needs a vehicle. 16 years old, I'll say.
Hey, we might go over there.
We can talk.
Leave the police lights on.
But anyway, I'm here to answer my questions. Have you all, anybody had a question in here? Y'all good?
I mean, it's amazing, they're just having a good time. How many employees are you going to have?
Um, we, I have it on the site plan, I couldn't tell you in detail what, what exactly it was going to be, but on this site plan, I list the number of employees that was given to me by the Heart of Florida staff. I think it might be maybe two or three physicians and then maybe six staff, but it's on this one.
The only reason I'm asking is because I'm counting the parking spaces, this one, is there going to be enough parking for people to come in and then enough parking for all the staff?
Yeah, I, I, I get your concern and I get your, you know, obviously your question. We base the parking on what they, what Heart of Florida had given me on the amount of staff that they would have, and, you know, obviously employees, doctors and staff, and so.
And, and be mindful that the doctors aren't there together, they come and go, depending on what doctors there, it would be the patients that are there.
I'm not trying to give you a hard time. I'm just making sure that we don't have a problem down the road or people are parking out on Pennsylvania because somebody says, well, I didn't check the park.
Yeah, absolutely.
What's the total number of spots on the site?
Okay. It's either 18 or 19.
Yeah.
I count 18.
18 is what I counted.
Yeah, this might not be.
So that'd be eight staff, 10 patients? That sounds pretty sufficient.
Yeah. Because I know that in further discussions, we discuss other health entities around here without somebody used to where it's done before.
No, I just say a question, right? She just got her first.
Are these two parking spaces here? Right here and right here?
Yes, ma'am.
So that's two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, plus the handy.
Yeah, we have 16, 16 spaces, Sheldon.
Eight staff, 16, so then eight patients.
Does eight staff include the additional doctors?
Yes. And the square footage of both buildings and the use, the number of car park or parking spaces meets your code.
Okay. All right. We just are dealing with this all over town, especially parking, and that's reasonable to make sure we don't add to the issue, but that sounds like you've got enough there. Okay. All right.
And it's abundantly clear to the applicant that there is no street parking.
Okay.
Abundantly clear.
Good. Okay. All right. Uh, do we have any public comments concerning this project? Appears to be. Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. It is now 6:21 and I closed the quasi judicial hearing and reopened the July 12, 2023 City Council meeting. Counsel, do we have any other discussion? I, I agree with both of you on parking was, it's, it's, on the picture, it's just hard to say, but, you know, that does sound like it'll be enough right now. Any questions, Jan? We good with this?
I'm still wondering about the number of parking spaces. There's how many staff? Eight?
There's eight and there's 16 total, so then there's eight patients. But then the eight staff would include all the doctors, because all of them will be there at the same time.
And the professional painter has confirmed that the parking ratio meets the code.
Right. So, yeah.
Which I'm really pleased to have that presentation. I think it's super helpful and I really appreciate it. We haven't always had that, and it goes a long way.
Well, thanks for the opportunity. I, I hear you and understand, and this is a concern we had as well, was there no car park? And there is. And respectfully, if you just be mindful that the eight that were kind of hanging on, working there, they're not all going to be there at the same time. They're going to come and go. So a doctor may be there one day and not there the next three days.
Dropped off, you know.
Like doll.
Go fishing. Okay. All right.
I'd like to propose, I move that we find the site plan consistent with the city's comprehensive plan.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion up here amongst us? Any public discussion? All right. So we've got, you moved to that. All right. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Unanimous. All right.
I move the site plan SPL 2023-0166 for Heart of Florida Health Center Incorporated be approved.
Can I second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion up here? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay. All right. Now. Moving on. All right. Okay. Purchasing and installation of two garage doors at Public Works. Do we have any public comments on that? Appears to be. Do I have a opposed motion? Would anybody like to make that?
Okay, I move to authorize the purchase and installation of two garage doors with the Public Works pony as presented.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion up here? And I do remember, this is using, we're needing the garage doors, obviously, but this is actually, we set aside enough money on the first one, and this is money that's left over, it'll actually cover the cost of the second. Right. Okay. That's what I remember. Okay. Good.
Does this mean the building, all the garage doors will then be adequate for?
Right. And means we can remove the $20,000 expenditure.
Right, and means we can remove the $20,000 expenditure from the upcoming budget.
Exactly.
That was
already sitting there.
Right.
That's great, no, that's perfect. Yeah, I guess the next question is, I know last time it was like, we got a proposed, we got a bid, and then the time we got around to it, it was we had to get another bid or something.
No, this bit's good right now, we actually talked to him today, so.
Good. All right, good deal, good deal, I'm glad to hear that. All right, so we got a motion and a second versus these garage doors, do we have any discussion? On the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's take care of that, let's get our garage doors, then we can be stormproof for the next hurricane. All right, I don't remember, 13, agreement, AGR 2023-19, Johnson Controls. Intuition System and Agreement, AGR 2023-20, Johnson Controls Fire Add-on. Is there any public comment?
Only if I may.
Yes.
To perform due diligence, we're in the process of getting another quote, so we can make sure this is the best. You know, so we have a comparison service, comparison price. So I'd like to ask this agenda item, we move to the next workshop for discussion, we'll have the other quote by then. We can compare and move forward.
Chief, does that work for you? Or, excuse me, Jan, I'm sorry. This is you. Yeah, she's, she's just fine with it. All right, Jan, are you gonna be okay? We put it off.
Yeah, we have some controls that the city had it, and we have to do a little more research, he has ADT, so comparable quotes.
Well, good. Okay, so you wanna move this to the next round, so we have a better idea of what.
Yes, sir.
That's fine.
I mean, I was gonna ask what you just said about the, we just have ADT, if it's the same it does the same thing as what we're trying to do with the Johnson?
Yeah, we have the same kind of security system, but.
So, fair, could we look at maybe finding a way to maybe condense it, so we don't have to do?
Well, we have is, we have ADT with the police, we have Johnson Controls with this building. And I think ADT with the firehouse? Yeah, got, well, anyway, we're already split up between the two buildings, so that's why we wanna take a look at both quotes, see which gives us a better price for the same service, that kind of thing.
Okay.
And if we can bundle, you know, once we determine which one we wanna make sense to go with, if we can bundle type thing, we'll definitely talk to the guy.
Okay, so everybody good with just moving this to the next, next workshop, get the file numbers? I'm good with that, all right. We don't need to vote on that, do we, Andrew? We're good.
Consensus will be fine.
All right, so I'll consider that. Okay, that's I don't remember 13. I don't remember 14. Department head reports.
Uh, yes, Mayor, the only thing I have is, um, I put a letter up there from TPO. An email from Ron Bombs, and there's a draft letter attached to that where they're asking for a letter of support from the city council for a grant that they're applying for with the US Department of Transportation. And this is sort of a walk-on, um, but if you're interested in, um, doing that, we would just need a motion uh, to authorize the mayor to sign the letter of support, and we can put that on city letterhead and get that out to TPO.
And if, you may have said this, I'm sorry, I was trying to read while you were talking, but it does say that this is at no cost to us locally to do this.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Yes. So I read this, and if this will help them, I think we ought to try to do it. Anybody disagree, agree? Y'all good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so would y'all make a motion that I could sign this letter, assuming we can get it, all right, real quick?
I'd like to make a motion if the mayor signs the letter of support to the county for the protect federal branch.
Okay, so I have a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion up here? Any discussion in the poll? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimous.
That's all I have, sir.
All righty.
Chad, do you have anything?
Hmm, a few things, not much. We talked about the Duke Energy, the meters we had out there, we was able to get the six meters turned off, and we should not see that bill on next month's bill. They should be gone, which is a savings. I had it wrote down on the bike. And all the many other things. Good a savings.
Two to 2,500 a year, something like that.
So in last spring, we were talking about we was having the stormwater issue and stuff out there, we're still waiting for FDUA to give us a meter hookup on a hydrant, so we can get them in there and run a camera through and bore that out.
Figure out what's that?
Hopefully get rid of that flooded problem there.
Right.
See, last month we'd had the fire inspections done on all public buildings, we managed to go through this week, and city hall, police department, fire department, art gallery, we all compliant now. Only thing we're waiting on is the Opto-Tel, they had to get their system tested, and they are working on that. Their inside people to get that tested, so, and we're gonna call for a reinspection on that then, so we'll hear that.
Okay.
We was able to close out 52 work orders this month. Besides doing a river mowing and daily duties. The, the community trust annual evaluation for Blue Run and Ernie Mills Park been completed and alternative. That's done and off the list. And on code enforcement since June, or since our last meeting, we had nine new cases, was able to close 11 cases. Give us 63 cases for the year, and we're about three, three fourths of our cases are closed with compliance, so.
Good.
Working pretty good at that.
Yeah, getting a lot done.
That's about all I have.
Okay.
Can I ask Chad something real quick?
Sure.
Is there any way that you could just check on, there's a tree at the emergency exit of the Blue Cove, out back behind just a cupcake, we have like an emergency gate that's locked there. And there's been a tree down for some time, I'm not sure whose responsibility the tree is, but if you could
It's behind what?
Take a look.
Was, was it behind?
Just a cupcake?
Behind just a cupcake.
You know, that's that.
Yeah, there's that new parking lot we made, and then there's like an emergency gate for the Blue Cove. Oh, I think it's Short Tower Way.
Yeah, it's Short Tower Way is where it is.
It might belong to a resident or the city might be responsible, I'm not really sure.
And we got property back in there and that, that road and stuff, so we'll check.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ma'am? Um, I just have one thing, I just wanted to run in council of the next budget workshop, Monday, July 24th, at 2:00 PM. And I have more documents to do.
Okay. I will not be attending, I will be out of town, on vacation, so I will miss your moody's voice.
You could participate, please.
What time is that, Jan?
Three p.m.
What, what day was that?
Monday, July 24th.
Gosh, I didn't hear that then. Okay.
And on that subject too, thank you, Rex, for reminding me, um, at our August meetings, Councilman, if, sorry, Vice Mayor and Steve will not be at the workshop on the 7th. And Mayor Dunn will not be at the council meeting that month, and Tim, you'll have to run the meeting.
All right, I get the hammer?
It's a gal.
Got you.
Depends upon who will.
Whoever can grab it first. Okay.
Chief, do you have anything more?
All right, first, thank you all for your focus today.
Thank you.
Making this police department advance, please, and that. All the things, um, the emergency management, the sandbag stuff. We will put it over on Bostic, we found a couple areas, some of the things we ran into there by the basketball court is the way that the water flows, it would wash the sand away. So if you put it there, it'd be gone. But we found another suitable spot there, um, the other locations that, that we looked at, even if we used them as secondary type things, we're probably gonna run into problems with schools, but schools are still in, car lines coming, and that's your standout, so. We were able to find some spots over there in Bostic, if it happens, we'll work out the logistics and who's gonna man it and things like that.
Cool, thank you, Chief.
The other thing, uh, police department save their money too, because they're not paying phone bills or the, uh, the wifi connections, so and then we found out we had some other little phone lines, kinda like the water meters that didn't exist that we were paying for. So we're not paying those anymore. Uh, we had a couple cell phones that like, just didn't even bear in our hands, but they don't exist, there's no numbers that we were still paying for. But that got, got taken care of. Blue Run Park, um, there, with the signs for no mooring and no swimming, those have been ordered. Whenever they come in, we'll get them put up, that'll help us with managing that stuff. And currently, the police department is still answering calls for service. We're still answering calls out on the river, um, and then just yesterday, we had the, uh, somebody over at the Chamber of Commerce in there on the water, running around the building with one shoe. So, I think, there's no answer for call for service, handling the good stuff. Then the other thing, July 28th through August 2nd, I will be at the Florida Police Chiefs Conference. Uh, and during that time, Lieutenant Bray will be in charge.
Okay.
Very good.
Anybody got anything for me?
And your guys are, I went by there the other day, they busy learning and training and all that good stuff, all that still going smoothly?
Well, I didn't want to be embarrassed today, so I didn't bring them over. My plan was to bring them over just before 5:00, 4:00, I got started and introduced them, but just things happened, they were in different places, and I had like one to bring over, something like that.
That's, that's totally fair.
By the time they're all together, they all come over, meet you guys.
Okay, that sounds great, that sounds great, no, I'm just glad things seem to be moving in the right direction.
I made a trip to the college center for the police academy today, I spoke to a class there. And their eyes just lit up when we talked to them about the things that are happening here. And openings we'll have, and we'll, we'll still have openings, you know, I'll work on in November when they graduate, so.
Good, good deal. The, the only question I had, I know my observation of Blue Run Park over the 4th of July, it was better than I was afraid it was gonna be, I guess would be the way I would put it. Uh, it still was very crowded, a lot going on there, but it, it seemed to be somewhat controlled chaos.
That's all Lieutenant Bray.
And, and I know y'all spent a lot of time down there trying to educate people mainly, and I know Ron, you were heavily involved in that. And how's that going?
The, the, Blue Run Park is actually doing very well. It's the southwest portion where they can come in through city property, and that's what's actually getting out of control.
Right.
You know, we had some panels there out there broken glass and trying to set up booby traps. Over the course of the weekend, and especially holiday, we saw as many as 100 people up underneath that bridge. So it, it gets pretty out of control there. Because as soon as they find out they can't swim on the exit or entry side, they go up and over the bridge and go over there. So it's just gonna be a challenge.
Right.
It's a change, and we're still gonna do that, so. And the signs are gonna help, actually, you know, right now, if we're not there, there's really never a tunnel right there.
Right.
So if we get the signs out there, um, and get them.
Now, are the signs going on the Blue Run Park side, or are they going on the?
The no swimming will go on the Blue Run Park.
Okay.
Um, and then the no mooring will go on the southwest side.
Gotcha.
Where the city property is, they have, they currently have the trespassing sign.
Right.
But they have the trail beat through right going right next to it.
Right.
Um, that, now, the DEP sign that was put up has been taken down again, they're gonna put it up, they're gonna put some engineering controls in to try and prevent that from vandalism, so over by the swing, the old swing.
Right, right. The, um, I know this has been bad around by the council for years. That property, there, you're talking about across from Blue Run Park.
Correct.
I believe is city property, and the idea has come up a number of times, to put the fence there, and it never seems to go anywhere, and I do understand, well, if we fence this off, they'll just go around the other side of the bridge and come in from that, from the swampy side. Is there anything we can do to help slow that down or do something about that?
Currently, I think there has been discussion that there was fence already purchased. No, we had fence out, leftover fence. Oh, okay, there was a plan for possibly installing a fence there. And then we're going to contact the state, um, work, continue to work with DEP, and then the state who owns the bridge.
Right.
So that we can limit access on the opposite side, so we don't get them coming in from both ways.
Sure.
And then that way, we can control the, the access there.
Right, I mean, yeah, like you, like we're all learning, it's, you, you close it off someplace, it, it pops up somewhere else, well, it just popped up across the river, is what it did. And it, it's gonna be a problem to prevent people or educate people that, that it really is not safe to do this.
Well, somebody's gonna get hurt, either because of the vessel traffic that comes through the river.
Exactly.
Or somebody's gonna fall down that hill.
Right.
And, uh, it was, to my surprise, seeing some of the elderly people that were going over there and traversing that terrain to go swimming.
Oh, exactly, yeah. I see the bikes go up there, and you know, and they, the little kids get off and run down the hill, but then you see the moms and dads and grandparents, they're going down there too, well, somebody's really gonna get hurt, because they're gonna stumble and fall right down the river.
Yep.
Okay.
I would definitely add you something more, uh, to work on, because Chad said, we can't have them break those water pipes.
No, that swing keeps coming up.
And we, we saw some kids up there climbing up that bridge, and they stand on that water pipe, and the back flips off.
Right.
So definitely trying to figure something out there.
Okay, that's a challenge.
We look at the fencing stuff in there, we have some of the things we ran to was connecting to this bridge which would be the state.
Into the mic, Chad.
So we looked at the fence, putting fence up and connecting it, some of the things we ran to was connecting the fence to the state's bridge.
Mm-hmm.
And then we had to have a door and stuff in there, because you have to have utility access to get in and out of there.
Oh, God.
Lots of keys, because with the utilities there that they have, so we have to have a door in there. And if we locked it, then the keys, and who would have to have it?
Oh, God.
And stopping people from getting in it.
Right, okay.
So it was some of the things, and then when we was there watching, it was just coming, like you said, coming from swampies floating down, climbing up on the thing and going up there.
The other thing is, like you said, that swing of that pipe under the river, that's not good either, it can't be. Okay. I know that's a challenge for you guys, and, you know, again, I think over time, the more educated these folks get, and the more we discourage them from doing this, maybe they'll slow down.
And, and we're up for the challenge, and, uh, with FWSC and, and shared part of working with us with the marine units.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there, there's gonna be visibility out there.
Right.
Most people, I like what we're getting ready to do with speeding in the city, most people realize
We're there, we're there.
Cost attached to some stuff.
Right. Well, we appreciate what y'all are doing, for sure.
Sure, and I would just say, well, I think as we work on those efforts, I mean, inevitably, I think it's gonna move up to swampies, so keeping a code enforcement eye on things that are happening at swampies, which also tends to become a swimming area, there's a lot of people with the tubes now, you see the tubes all the way up stacked as people are getting out at swampies, in and out, so that's really becoming another access point that, you know, as we drive, try to drive people, that's gonna be the next place they show up.
I totally agree, and the other thing I keep wondering, every time when I go by there, and it's nothing against swampies, there's an awful lot of vehicles in swampies, and I'm not sure they're all there, mm, okay. I mean, there just can't be.
Yes, you're on the dead of a public parking.
Exactly, and, you know, I don't know how you prevent that, but it's just a problem. Okay, well, yeah.
To me, if we don't get this on the workshop, we're gonna be here talking about this next year, I know August is filling up, we're I know August is filling up workshop wise pretty quick. And I don't, you know, we're laying a lot on the different law enforcement agencies. We're asking Chad, you know, to go and look at that. At some point, maybe a September agenda, we're going to get through by the season. We can add this to the agenda and figure out what we got to do. We've got to contact the state and everything that Chad just mentioned about state requirements, utility requirements, same thing that Ron just mentioned. Otherwise, we're going to be talking about this next year.
We will. One thing I've done is reached out to Jim Cooleyard and Kathy Bryant and asked them to come to a meeting, I think in August. Is that what I asked them to come? I can't remember.
You asked them to come to the August workshop?
Right. That's what I thought. August workshop. To discuss this whole Blue Run Park situation and the county knowing and understanding the boat problem, the traffic problem, the tubing problem. And just so, for two, they wanted to educate them on some of the issues we're dealing with over here and look for their support and advice on their thoughts on how to optimize and figure this thing out. Again, now, they don't have as much control. If they have control, can help us with the Blue Run Park side. It sounds like that's getting better. But I think if they really come and understand, like Ron can explain the issues there at the bridge, you know, how can we make this better? Because I think that's what it's going to take. And maybe we reach out to these other agencies too and try to like FWC and have them all sit here and listen to this. I agree. Every year, this is a problem, okay? And every year, it kind of gets Band-Aid put on it, and then it comes back again, and it's worse or better or whatever. But I did reach out to the county and ask them to come. If we reach out to FWC and the rest of them, get them all here in August. And again, I don't know what August is going to look like, but like I said, we may have to just move something off August. Because to me, until tubing season's over, this is just going to be bad.
We'll remove Tim's checklist.
Do what?
We'll remove Tim's checklist again.
Yeah, and because Tim's not going to be here for the August workshop, there may be benefit to scheduling at a time that he can be with us.
Oh, it would be. I didn't know he wasn't going to be here.
He's going to invite all those people. I mean, I don't want to start pushing special meetings because I know that we do that a lot.
Well, maybe we get the county here and then see how that goes. And then set the timer and we'll get another group here.
I'll be on Zoom, so that won't be an issue. When I spoke about Mandy, I don't have any problem participating. I didn't want to do, you know how hard it is to hear from people on Zoom?
Oh, yeah.
So I didn't want to get into, you know, hey, I can't hear you and pester everybody that way. The, there's basically two issues that we're kind of talking about here. We've got everything we just spoke about with the congestion, et cetera, et cetera. We have five documents, though, that govern Blue Run Park. Those five documents, we have findings from two different firms that have not been addressed since 2016, the documents conflict, et cetera. So until we get those base documents fixed, for lack of a better term.
I think, I know what you're saying, and I think that it could be beneficial to get organized in such a way to identify all of the issues in these documents and to be able to have that conversation prior to.
Right.
The more public conversation. So you look a little perplexed. But the documents, if you start reading from the beginning of the creation of the park and the different documents and agreements, that maybe there's some things within there. I'll just make one example because I think it's a good example that we've talked about before. It's like having an advisory committee. Is that what you call it?
Mm-hmm.
So that's an example of one of the things that is listed in those agreements that has never come to fruition. So as we begin to try to work together about the park and make more decisions about the park, there's some feeling that making sure we're in line with all of those agreements that have led to this point are in line. Otherwise, we're just picking up the conversation midstream. Does that make sense?
Yes. Right. And just to add on, I think we need to understand up here before the issues with the documents so that we can communicate it intelligently with all these different parties.
And get the feedback, and maybe they'll tell us that some of these things are resolved or some of these things aren't a concern. But it just seems like we need to get on the same page about the whole park before we begin to tackle how we're going to compromise on the problems.
Right. I know I've asked about that, who the commission is and all like that. The last thing I heard, the two members of the Blue Run Commission are Jim Cooleyard, who is with Marion County, and an individual who does not live in the city. And there's no city resident on that commission.
And I've heard other people named to be on that commission. So I think it's important that it's documented who that is.
Right.
And that we know what's happening with that.
And that's only one of many.
Oh, it is.
Many findings that these two firms have found.
Right.
Now, are you referring to the compliance audit?
Yes, the two compliance audits.
Two compliance audits?
Right, yes. Andrew performed one in 2016 or 15, and then this other audit company, after Andrew did, also performed an audit. And both of their findings are very similar.
Okay. Yeah, and I would just piggyback that when I spoke publicly once about one of the audits, and there was a lot of input that maybe it wasn't what it seemed or that there was just more to learn about it. So I read the document, I took it at face value, and then learned a lot of things afterwards. So I do think it's something that we all need to be on the same page about before we, like I talked about, the documents very assertively as fact. And I learned after the meeting that some people called me and said that maybe, you know, they didn't agree with how the document was being interpreted.
So how do you all want to go about this? Do we want to put this off until September?
It's going to be a big one. It's going to be a lengthy.
Probably should. Let's get the short-term running done so we don't have.
Oh, we're going to get the short-term running.
Right, right. Yeah. It's going to be fairly cumbersome. Because again, there's five documents, there's two reviews.
Have we all seen all that?
Yeah, I.
I know I've got some of it. I don't remember the two audit.
I sent a link to you all.
Correct.
While that, to all the documents, all of the.
That's what I was thinking.
Running in March. It was quite a while ago.
Right. Okay. I agree, this is going to be a mess trying to get through Blue Run Park. But again, I've asked Marion County to come just to listen and to see what we're dealing with. And I was not anticipating going through the Blue Run plan. It was really what we're dealing with in the park. And then this, if all this compliance audits and stuff don't match or we don't understand them, then we need to have somebody explain what it is we don't understand.
Yeah, I think there's value to us making sure that all of us have the documents and then all of us going through the documents and then scheduling a time for all of us to talk about the documents. And there could be public comment about the documents. And that would at least get us all in the know about the park.
Okay.
Mandy, I just forwarded you the email that you forwarded us. Just so it's on top, you can resend it. Because I don't think I can. I don't think I'm allowed to.
So are we going to go ahead and move forward with discussion? If the county can be here on the August workshop and then maybe move the documents to the September workshop?
Do that later. That's fine with me. If that's all beyond. I want them to see some of the problems. I keep trying to get them to hear and listen. And I think they are listening, and I think they're, but I think if we kind of express some of the real concerns we're having just dealing with Blue Run Park and.
We can also use that meeting as a kickoff. So they understand, you know, we're getting ready to take a look at these five documents. Because, you know, they're busy. I'm sure this is nowhere's on their radar, I'm sure.
Right.
We can express all that. More to come later as far as the documents. Here's the issue with the congestion right now.
Right.
If we can just clearly outline what we intend to talk about at the workshop with the county.
Sure.
So that we have, you know, kind of parameters on what we're going to be addressing so that it's not all over the place.
You following that or not?
Is somebody going to give me a list?
I'll try to put something together.
Okay.
Okay. Because I've already kind of, Kathy Bryant responded, and I responded to her on some of it. But I'll sit down and try to organize my thoughts about it and get that out to you and to Jim. And then we can put it in the agenda so everybody can see it.
Okay.
And again, I was not anticipating reviewing all five of these documents at that time. But I agree. I think it would lead up to, okay, we're dealing with this, but we want to have a future meeting with you guys on this park situation and all these documents and have them help explain some of this stuff. Perfect. I don't know. Andrew's told me numerous times, he has the book on his desk with all this stuff.
Yeah, if I may, counsel, I can provide some feedback on some of these things. And I think that, you know, I've become very familiar with them, at least. Like I have them as a frequent reference. I have to go back and look at them. I don't have them memorized, but I know them. And I think with the audit done by the consultant, whoever the city selected, that particular vendor, I know there was some criticism from the county because it was an out-of-state auditor. They do a lot of work in the state of Florida. And I think it all boiled down to one or two kind of controversial, you know, questions that were really answered by the state and FWC. And now that's been dealt with as far as the, you know, dealing with the vendors in Blue Run Park. And I think the most controversial issues have been resolved. It really kind of boils down to, really, I think, where it's at. You know, if there's still outstanding problems and so forth and where it's not clear, really where you all are going, who is involved? And, you know, the city's authority is broad but limited in certain areas. If any of the documents need to be resolved, I'll compensate for that. And there are, you know, those are difficult to, well, it would require the county's complete consent to modify those because they're auto-renewing and they're locked in.
Right.
And so really, the biggest thing with them is identifying, I think, the problems out there. And once staff is aware of it, you know, I can assist in. You know, it ultimately becomes a pitching solution of how to address those. It's more of what are the problems as of, you know, review of the documents. Now, there are some conflicting, you know, statements within there, within some of the documents and so forth. But those aren't, those conflicts aren't necessarily irreconcilable. You know, it's, I think, more of a problem-oriented focus and identifying those. But I'm sure if you were to go through some of those documents, you'd have lots of questions for me. You know, lots of questions for staff and, you know, for the chief, anybody that, what's actually going on there? So I think you're at a very good starting point is my point here. And I think that, again, the real controversial aspects of those things, at least from the county's, you know, point of view, those have been resolved. They might not like those resolutions, you know, and I don't want to speak for them. But now we know what the rules are at Blue Run Park, and, you know, it's operating that way. And it's different than it was when those audits were performed because there's new rules in place. So.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Go ahead. You were about to say something.
Just beat this horse a little bit more. Two major things that I see are areas where it's very vague as to far as who's performing what services. The other areas is very vague is the economic situation, the financial situation of who pays for what. It says in many of these documents, the city and the county were sharing this. But it doesn't give percents. It doesn't give anything like that. And right now, when I go through the budget, the city's pretty much picking up most everything. And I look at the future, what's going to happen in the future, the city is going to be picking up way more expense. So those are the items that I think are pretty important that we need to figure out now. I'm done beating it.
Okay. No, I agree with you because, I mean, like you pointed out to me in these meetings. Okay, we're talking about this bathroom situation. And then back when this was all originated and we were going to do this was like in 2007 or '08, and we owned a utility company and a sewer company. Well, now we don't. And so when that was kind of envisioned, I think we had, we could have handled it. Now, when we have to supply the water in the sewer for the restrooms and whatever lift stations may be involved in getting that over to the water treatment plant, that that becomes an expense of ours, more than likely that at the time, this was all kind of negotiated. We had a way of doing it. Now we really don't. And I totally agree with that. All right. Any other liaison or department head, anybody needs to talk? We're good. Okay. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any additional comments?
Nothing specific, counsel. The only thing that I would say is kind of reacting to some of my past comments. You know, there are a number of new regulations and rules. I've seen a few articles floating out and around, you know, being sent out via staff on some of the new regulations. And, you know, with these regulations, I suppose really we want to try to find a bright side to it. The only bright side is it could have been worse. That's kind of the consensus with some of them. Because the bills did morph down, and believe it or not, some of these were watered down from what they originally, you know, were drafted to be, which some of these are really change in the face of, you know, the way that local governments can operate. And it's a very big departure from the 1968 Home Rule Constitution provisions. That being said, that's where we're at. There are a number of rules and regulations that we need to comply to. I've already got some questions from staff on some of them. And so, you know, I'll be addressing some of them piecemeal as they come up to provide you information rather than like a broad sort of, you know, this doesn't happen. I mean, a lot of these things you're aware of. But there are going to be some things coming to you, and then I'll be addressing with staff. And I know that we kept in the loop on those as changes are made that need to be made to accommodate the changes to the law. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Yeah, I have seen some of that. Okay. Anybody up here got any additional thoughts, comments before we adjourn?
I'd just like to remind everybody that Thursday, the 27th, that noon is going to be the unveiling of the Florida Paddle, Florida Paddling Trails Association recognition of Dunellen as a new ways community. And hope everybody can be there.
And it's noon, right?
There'll be food and beverage. You're going to get a canopy. And thinking about asking John Sims to come drum his guitar and sing for us.
Okay. Good deal.
Also, there's something else. Oh. For, again, this is totally up to counsel, but I had mentioned about putting on next month's agenda. Or was it September? I'm not sure, but I'm ringing it up again. And that is to get the commercial, big commercial truck rigs off of Chestnut and Pennsylvania Avenue, detouring them to Powell Road. If we could start that discussion and see how that could be done through TPO.
Okay.
Would you put that on the agenda for August or would you like to wait till September?
Probably September.
I was going to say, I was going to say.
I think August is crazy for. Yeah. Okay.
All right. September discussion rerouting the truck route.
Mm-hmm. And that would take Portland Transit Station would have to sign off on that.
Of course.
Because Powell is not a highway where right now it is.
Yeah, there's already been a lot of discussion about that intersection at Powell and Cedar having to be completely redone if we were to do that. So traffic study, engineering and.
All kind of good stuff.
Lots of stuff that needs to be done.
Okay. All right. Anybody else got anything?
Yeah.
I'm really trying to end this by seven o'clock.
I've got one more, Wally. I'm going to ruin your seven o'clock. Chad, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm not updated. We need an RRC contact. We have the signs in for the Blue Run Park signs. But we're not able to contact anybody in RRC.
I did. I got through to Bill Nover.
Okay.
And he's supposed to be calling Chad tomorrow.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so that's where the signs are going to go. How about the payment, their portion of the payment for the sign?
We've already received it.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Can they move?
You got a second? All better?